Good evening, everyone. I would like to call to 26, 2021 Meeting of the Common Council. Kerry, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Bell? Mr. Bell? Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Here.
Mr. Milstead?
Here.
Ms. McKeerinen? Ms. McKeerinen? Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
And Mayor Smith?
Here.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Beech is here. I think you forgot Counselor Beech.
Yeah, here. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome. Pursuant to and in accordance with the continuity of government ordinance adopted by council pursuant to Virginia Code 15 dot 2 dash 1413, and under the adopted amendment to the budget bill HB 29, 2019, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and resulting order of the good home and social distance, council is meeting virtually by electronic communications means via WebEx. Notice has been provided to the public and arrangements have been made for public access and public comment through electronic communication means. Before we go to the moment of silence, I have a motion to amend the January 26, 2021 City Council meet, City Council regular meeting to add the following items to the agenda. An ordinance repealing and replacing Article 14 dot 1 of the zoning ordinance of City of Winchester, Virginia by establishing a floodplain district by requiring the issuance of permits for development and by providing factors and conditions for variances to the term of the ordinances TA dash 20 dash 608. entertain a motion to add this item to our agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, Clark.
Kerry, would you please call the row?
Mr. Bell? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McKeerinen?
Yes.
Mr. Milstead?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beech?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes, and I think Counselor Bell is on. Kerry?
Yes, I am, and I am now unmuted, and so, and my vote was yes.
The item will be added to the agenda as item number 12 dot 1. Thank you. We will now observe a moment of silence and be led in the pledge allegiance by Vice Mayor Hill. Please. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
Of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
God.
Invisible.
Liberty.
Justice.
For all. The next item is the approval of minutes. We have before us the minutes of the January 12, 2021 regular and work session meetings. Unless there are edits, changes, or deletions, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve, Beech?
Second, Hill. Kerry, would you please call the row?
Mr. Bell? Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McKeerinen? Mr. Milstead?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beech?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. The minutes have been approved. The next item is a report of the mayor.
I can't take votes.
After each item on the agenda is presented, I will not be calling on each council to be respectful of everyone's time. However, I would ask councillors if they are, if there are any questions or discussions, and each councillor will need to unmute themselves. They wish to speak. When it is time, and in a second, I will open the floor, and you will need to unmute yourself if you would like to make a motion or a second. Once a motion and a second has been made, a roll call vote will be conducted for each item on the agenda. When your name is called, unmute to cast your vote, and you will then unmute again. I have no further items for my report. The next item is a report of the city manager. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you. Just a few items here. First off, roadwork. We have some road closures and detours for the Hope Drive Extension Project, and that's going to begin tomorrow and are expected to last through mid-March. However, the area will be open to local traffic, and access to all businesses will be maintained throughout the project. Information about the project is available on the city's website. Winchester VA, very helpful video on the website if you just click the projects button at the top. Also, VDOT held a virtual town hall earlier this afternoon regarding their I-81 Bridge Replacement Project on Millwood Pike. We've been coordinating with VDOT to schedule our Millwood Avenue Improvement Project at the same time. Construction isn't expected to begin for two to three years due to funding availability, but public feedback and design work will begin this year in preparation for the council. For information on that can also be found on the city's website. Quick COVID update. We restarted, or we have, at least we started, the third season of the city's podcast, Ralph's Review, and we interviewed Dr. Green. We encourage you all to check it out. It was a very interesting conversation with updates on vaccines, so we encourage our residents to go to the city's website. We're going to be doing that podcast the second and fourth Monday of each month leading up to council meetings. This will be the, after this meeting, we will no longer be doing verbatim minutes. We're going to try out doing action minutes. What verbatim minutes cost us some money. They take a lot of staff time to do, and with some of the updated capabilities we have with the video, which allow people to jump directly to items within a video, we felt like the verbatim minutes were no longer necessary. So this saves a significant amount of staff time and money. I try out action minutes to see what people think. And then finally, I want to thank and recognize Lynn Miller. So Lynn Miller is going to be retiring at the end of this month after 49 years of service with the city. He began as a firefighter, worked his way up to chief. Upon retirement from fire and rescue after 34 years of service, he returned on a part-time basis to serve as the city's emergency management coordinator. In 2016, he was appointed as election director after serving in the capacity as an interim for a year. His dedication to public service is something to be honored and admired, and he will be greatly missed. And I can tell you, as somebody who's worked in a handful of jurisdictions, folks like Lynn Miller are rare, especially these days. So we all owe him a debt of gratitude. Thank you, Lynn. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. The next item is a report of the city.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Melissa. I just want to say, Lynn, you will be missed, and thank you for your service to our city. The next item on the agenda is public hearings. The first public hearing is a request of Kim Craig for a conditional use permit to allow for neighborhood convenience establishment laundromat. First, one dash two dash eight of Winchester zoning ordinance located at 715 South Kent Street, zone high density residential district. Presented by Frank Hopkins. Good evening, Frank.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. I have some updates for you on this item based on the feedback you provided for me last time. One of the questions was asked was whether it be an owner living on site. It would not, that apartment there is already being rented, and the owner does not live there. Second was whether it be a second water meter or not. There's no intention to build a second water meter at this time. Ms. Craig, the owner of the building, has stated that she doesn't even make the resident who live there pay their portion of the water bill. She just pays it. So she's intending to pay the laundromat thing, portion of this structure, the same as the rest of the water bill. As for hours of operation, in the staff report, I've added three conditions. One of those is hours of operation. I'll get to that in a moment. And then whether it would be a coin op or whether there would be someone on site, the intent is for it to be a coin op laundry, but that someone will come by in the morning, in the middle of the day, and at the end of the day to open, close, and check in on the site. There is a potential. I want to clarify, there were some questions last time about a cafe use, which was clearly stated in the letter, and I do want to apologize to Councilor Herbstrick for that confusion. In all of my conversations with the applicant, the insinuation was always that this would be a retail component consistent with a laundromat, so that there may be prepackaged food that might get sold in conjunction with, you know, your soap and whatnot, but certainly nothing about cooking or anything like that there. And so I have added that as one of the conditions in the staff report. If you could go to the third slide of this presentation, please. Keep going. That's the one. So I had them update their site plan again based on the feedback. So the three conditions that have been added to this property, again listed in the staff report, are number one, the operating hours will be confined from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I researched the hours of other coin op laundromats in the city. This is fairly consistent with what they have, and I think very appropriate for the area, given that oftentimes people work shift work, and it might only be available early in the morning or somewhat late at night, but still wanted to constrain the hours for obviously those neighborhood residents. The second condition, washing or drying machines will not be placed against the west interior wall that abuts the existing residential unit. That is, again, based on the feedback from last time, and you can see from the plan they have provided. They are, there's two machines still on the wall. I expressed to them that those would still have to be moved back at least, you know, an inch or two, so that it wouldn't be right up on there vibrating against the wall. And finally, the final condition being that a small retail component consistent with a laundromat is permissible so long as no food is cooked or prepared on site, and that the retail component remains accessory to the laundromat use. Again, really clarifying and making sure that that retail component is something that's, it's not intended to be for cooking of food or having a cafe. It's literally just, you know, for people waiting, and if they want to get a Snickers or whatnot, they can do that. So I'll take questions from you.
Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
No, sir, there were none.
Mr. Elwell would like to speak at this public hearing?
If anybody would like to speak on this item, please unmute yourself. Unmute your microphone. You are a call-in user and want to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Councillors, are there? For Frank?
Mayor?
Counselor Herbstrick?
Thank you. Thank you, Frank, for the, for the information and the responses to the questions. One final question, and I'm guessing this would happen, but it did seem like in the, in the information provided on this and the letter that was provided, that, you know, that there, there, it's almost a sense that there will be somewhat security on site because this, there's an apartment that's rented there. But my assumption is that, that, that tenant is not going to be kind of the eyes and ears on this, on this laundromat. But I guess my question is, I'm sure that they'll be provided, you know, a number to call should, should something happen here, and should it be an issue. Just want to make sure that, you know, if there are ever any issues here, that the tenant doesn't become kind of the, the, the go-to for, for any kind of safety or security issues, but, but recognizing that they're there more than anyone else, probably, that, that they should at least have access to certainly 911 if it's an emergency, but the property owner if, if that, if that's needed.
Understood. I had conversations with Ms. Craig about that, that this would not be the proprietor, I guess you want to call it, of the laundromat, that there would be an individual who just rents a room there or rents that apartment there. But I had not had any conversations about the security of it or having that person be responsible for that.
Are there any other questions or discussions for Frank? What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve, Beech, with the three conditions listed.
McKernan, second, with the three conditions listed.
Thank you. Kerry, would you please call the row?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McKeerinen?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beech?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes, and that item will be forwarded. Thank you. The next item is a request of Bill McIntosh for a conditional use permit to allow for extended state lodging, nine dash two dash 19 of the Winchester zoning ordinance located at 112 North Loudon, zone central business district with historic district overlay. Mr. Hopkins?
Good evening again. I have no updates on this item. I'll take questions.
Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online on this item?
No, sir, there were none.
Mr. Elwell, is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
If you would like to speak on this item, please unmute your microphone at this time. If you are a call-in user, press star six to unmute yourself. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Councillors, are there any questions for staff on this item?
A question, Sullivan.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was, I recall for the last similar, one of these we did, which was up on Amherst Street. We required that the applicant reserve some parking spaces in the parking garage. Is there any plan to do that in this situation? Or I guess I would pose that question to my fellow council members. It would seem a little awkward that we would actually do it for one applicant, but, but not another one. So just wondering if any discussion has taken place in regards to that. Thank you.
If, if I may. There is, there is parking provided. If you could go through the slides a little bit. We were aware of that situation. It is in the parking exempt district, but you are absolutely correct that in a prior instance, they were made to get parking as part of this use, and so as part of this application. If you go one more slide, maybe. They have reserved parking that's under common ownership. It's, it's within the distance allowable by the zoning ordinance. Keep going in the slides. Yes, there it is. So you can see that there is, there is provided parking.
Gotcha. Perfect. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? What is the pleasure of the body?
Motion to approve?
Second, Beech?
Was there a motion from Counselor Herbstrick?
Yes.
And a second from Counselor Beech? Kerry, would you please call the row? We can't hear Kerry.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McKeerinen?
Yes.
Mr. Milstead?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beech?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes. And that item moves forward. The next item on the agenda is a request of Maria Santos for a conditional use permit to convert ground floor residential use, essential use, per section nine dash two dash 16 of the zoning ordinance at 725 and 727 South Loudon Street, zone central business district. Mr. Humans, Planning Director, will be presenting. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. There are no changes to this request. On the screen, you see the gray building where the lower portion, but not right out to the front, is proposed for conversion to residential. If we could go ahead, two slides. You can see the issue that came up during the work session review was the compliance with the approved site plan, which is down in the lower right there, showing a grass area in behind the building. And then when you compare that to what was actually built as of March of 2019 in the upper left, they have more parking there than they should. And so one of the conditions that was recommended by the Planning Commission and staff was that they have conformity with the approved 2018 plan, effectively removing some of the gravel parking there, where you see the one automobile in behind the structure there, and restoring some green space, particularly with more of the property being in residential use. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Elwell, is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
If you would like to speak on this item, please unmute your microphone at this time. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Councillors, are there any questions for staff?
Mayor, I have a question, if we could, please.
Counselor Beech?
Thank you. Tim, real quick, I noticed that the Planning Commission had three conditions to recommend that, well, they, they listed, they say they have two conditions, but they listed a third. Why did they list site plan to be completed before occupancy? Isn't that standard practice?
So this is a building that's already occupied, and so the, the question is whether or not council wants to get the site compliance done prior to the occupancy of the ground floor unit or perhaps even sooner, such as before a building permit is issued. Entirely council's discretion.
But the staff recommendation did not include that, right?
Not, not when it went to the Planning Commission. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Mayor, Counselor Bell, following up on Counselor Beech's comments, I think it would be prudent to have the issuance of the building permit triggered or preconditioned on the comportment of the site plan, of the previously approved site plan. So that would be my recommendation. If they, if they have taken the site plan out of conformity, I think, and that they want a conditional use, they need to bring it back into conformity for, for approval to move forward with the residential unit.
Mr. Humans?
Yes, that's, that's council's prerogative. If you want to insert that language, that makes a lot of sense.
McKernan?
So. So I need a mo. And. So is there a motion?
Beech, I make a motion to approve with the additional third condition of site plan be completed before occupancy.
Is there a second?
McKernan, second.
Kerry, would you please call the row?
Do we have a discussion on the motion? Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Just Counselor Beech specifically used the word prior to occupancy, so it would be as a condition of the occupancy permit, which means they could start construction. I'm wondering if we would not want the condition that the site plan be completed before the issuance of a building permit.
Mr. Humans, is there? Do they need a building permit?
Yes, they would, sir.
And so have they applied for one?
No, they cannot apply for one until they secure this conditional use permit.
Okay. So will a site plan be needed as well?
A site plan, a cursory one, but not, not a full site plan, no.
Okay, so, Bill, are you making an addendum to Counselor Beech's motion?
If possible, I mean, I don't want to create too much headache, but, but there's specific phraseology of building permit versus occupancy. Occupancy would mean that they had already completed the construction and that they could have a building permit issued. So it's, it, it's kind of putting a cart before a horse. It doesn't really matter. If they can't get occupancy without the site plan, they're moving forward with their development at their risk. But if they don't make, if they don't bring the site plan into conformity, then an occupancy permit would not be issued. So I'm fine leaving it as occupancy, but I think it would behoove them to let them understand the risk that they would be taking.
Counselor Beech, it is your motion, so.
I'm open to any suggestions on edit. I just went off of what the Planning Commission amended.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Melissa? Are you there?
Yes, sir.
So if, if Counselor Bell wants to add to Beech's motion, does another motion need to be made? Or does he need to get Counselor Beech to add that with his?
No, we have a motion by Counselor Beech on the floor, so Mr. Beech would need to accept the friendly amendment from Counselor Bell and, or leave his motion as he first indicated.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I accept the edit as Counselor Bell was recommending then. Okay. So just read instead of prior to occupancy, prior to issuance of the building permit.
Okay. Counselor McKernan, since you seconded, are you fine with that?
With that, thank you.
Since you seconded the motion, are you fine with it?
Yes, I'm fine with it. Thank you.
Okay. Kerry, would you please call the row?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. McKeerinen?
Yes.
Mr. Milstead?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan? Mr. Beech?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes, and that is forwarded. The next item on the agenda is a request of Bill McIntosh for a conditional use permit to allow for bed and breakfasts in, per section six dash two dash one of the Winchester zoning ordinance located at 514 Amherst Street, zone residential office district with historic Winchester district overlay. Mr. Humans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Briefly, I want to start out just by pointing out that Mr. McIntosh refiled the application with a Mr. Jim Thompson as the applicant. So we have advertised this as a request of Mr. McIntosh, but it would be Mr. Thompson, who is also party to this WebEx section. So if there's any questions the council has, I believe Mr. Thompson can answer those this evening. If we could go to the next slide, please. There was a, an update to some of the material. If we could go to the next slide, please. While we're getting there, I'll summarize what's going to be shown on the next slide, which is an updated layout that includes an emergency vehicle and truck access coming in from Selma Drive. So on the current slide, you see Selma Drive along the right or east side of the property. That's where the proposed tent location is. There was a concern expressed by one of the councillors at work session. by one of the councillors at work session two weeks ago about whether or not that gate that you see in the lower image there at the bottom of the screen could accommodate two-way traffic. It most likely cannot, and it would also be challenging for emergency vehicles. So the applicant has agreed as part of the exhibit to provide foreign access. They are requesting that that access be allowed to be gravel for a period of time. I do have the slides that have the twelve previously identified conditions and one additional condition so that council can review those thirteen conditions as part of this request. Can we please advance the slide? Mr. Hoffman, do you know if staff is in the room with you?
I believe they are attempting to do that right now.
Thank you. I'll continue. Just to give an update, otherwise, the applicant did attempt to be responsive to the concerns that councillors expressed at the work session. You may recall that the previous request was for forty events outdoors after 6:00 PM that would be fewer than fifty persons, and then forty events that would be between fifty and a hundred persons. They have revised that now. And so there are now three tiers of events, and I think we are going to be getting, that's not the right presentation. Thank you. So on this graphic here on the left, which hopefully we can zoom into slide number nineteen here. One back from that, please. There we go. If we can enlarge that, please. This is the exhibit that shows that update with the truck access coming in from Selma Drive. It does specifically call out the tent site as the location where a tent would be used for the events occurring outside of the bed and breakfast. Can we zoom in on that slide, please?
They're saying they can't see him, and hold us a moment.
Okay. Continuing with the discussion, there was also concern about the trash enclosure. And so the applicant has clarified that it is the responsibility of any vendor who wishes to have an outdoor event, that they would be required to remove the trash that same evening as the event. So there would not be an accumulation of trash, particularly food waste, on the property any longer than the time it takes them to clean up and remove from the site any trash associated with an outdoor event. Otherwise, the seven-room bed and breakfast would have a small trash enclosure area that would be managed by the operator of the bed and breakfast. But that would have minimal potential for offensive odors to the adjoining property owners. So on the slide here, thank you, in the upper right, you can see where they've noted a firetruck access from Selma Drive that may need to come all the way over to the building depending upon fire and rescue department review of the site plan if council does approve the conditional use permit. We could go forward two slides, please. Sorry, Mayor, I'm trying to keep this brief.
I know you are. Thank you. Can you just, just go through the, just go through the items and they'll catch up?
Yes. And so here we are. As I mentioned, they've modified the request. Now they have three tiers dependent upon the number of persons who would be attending the outdoor events. So they, they went from a total of eighty events down to seventy-five, but more importantly, they have done a graduated or tiered proposal where you now see there's only twenty events that could have between a hundred and two hundred persons as compared to the forty events they previously saw that would have more than fifty persons. They've introduced a middle category, which would be the twenty-five maximum events that would have between fifty and ninety-nine persons, and then thirty that would be the smaller events. So I've updated this slide. And finally, if we could go to the next slide, just briefly summarize the changes to the list of conditions the council saw are shown and highlighting here for the first seven conditions. Do you particularly want to direct council's attention to the suggested condition number seven based upon your comments at the work session? And subsequently, we've changed that to say reapproval by council rather than just review by staff. But I heard a variety of suggested timeframes for that. And one of the concerns that was raised by one of you was with a wedding venue, they typically book those upwards of a year ahead. So you may want to keep that timeframe closer to one year or two years instead of the three years that Planning Commission had recommended, so that if it's not going to be reapproved, there are fewer instances of bookings upwards of a year afterward. And then finally, the last slide contains the other six conditions, again, highlighting some of the things that councillors were focused on. And we did add condition number thirteen pertaining to trash. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online on this item?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Elwell, is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
If you would like to speak on this matter, please unmute your microphone at this time.
I'm here for questions. I'm here for questions if there's any questions that you might have in regards to this.
Who's speaking?
Jim Thompson.
Thank you. Patrick.
Mr. Mayor, I don't see any other members of the public indicating they want to speak.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Councillors, are there any questions for staff?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question if we could. Last, Beach? Tim, on the, the number of events, I see that the, they reduced the number of events, but on the highest occupancy one, it's twenty events, but it went from a hundred or up to a hundred and fifty, but now it's up to two hundred persons?
Yes, thank you. I did want to point that out. That is a request specifically of Mr. Thompson to have events that could be between one hundred and fifty and two hundred persons. So that is more intensive in terms of the fewer number of events, but with a potentially larger crowd. It's a good observation.
I think this is a great use for this property. It lends its wealth to it. But my understanding is to CUP to be approved, the finding must be that it will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of citizens around that area. And we've gotten a lot of concern with our own fire department, our own police department, but the citizens that we're representing the voice of. So I think it's a great purpose. I love the project, but I have a lot of citizens complaining or concerned about the noise, particularly among other things. So I don't see how I can support it at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Beach. Is there any other comments?
McKernan here. McKernan.
Counselor McKernan.
Thank you. Thank you for addressing my concern with the, the problem with reviewing it after three years because people are going to have events planned. I am, I'm also very concerned when we think about twenty events a year that could have two hundred people at them. And it will irrevocably change the climate of that community, that neighborhood. It will increase traffic on Amherst. And I'm also finding it difficult to support this at this time.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor Smith, Evan Clark.
Counselor Clark.
I would like to propose that for this conditional use permit, that we do the first review on this permit with all the different concerns we have. I'd like to set that timeframe for one year for the initial review, and then two years for each successive review, unless there are other councillors that feel like we should have a different interval.
Thank you. Duly noted.
Mayor Smith?
Counselor Bell.
Evan, just for clarification, you said specifically review, but Tim was recommending a reapproval. Are you looking for staff review after one year and then staff reviews two years after that?
No, sir. I'm sorry. I used the wrong word. Reapproval is what I meant. Keep the same language.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because it was a specific word you used. But I'd also would like to, just, I don't think we can, we can stipulate this in the conditional use. I know there's a lot we can do in one. But with the, the grass parking, this would be more of a recommendation and encouragement to the, to the property owner and the operator. It's just be very cautious and, you know, you've got some very mature trees on the grounds that are in vicinity of the area where it seems obvious people would park on the generally flat areas. You park too many vehicles on there for too long, and you're going to compact the root and potentially damage or destroy those trees. So would be my encouragement to be cautious of that. As far as my support, again, I do think it is a, a good fit for the, a good use, a good repurposing. I, and I can get behind it and support this. I'm a little surprised at the jump from one fifty to two hundred. And I would prefer to see it at one fifty in order to get behind it. And I think with the approval, reapproval process that Counselor Clark suggested would give not only the applicant the opportunity to prove themselves, but the council the opportunity to reevaluate, to see if this is going as, as proposed.
Thank you, Counselor Bell. Is there any other discussion? Counselor.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Tim. A couple of questions. What, help me remember, what is the max capacity of parking on that grass?
I don't think anybody's done that analysis yet. With the site plan.
Okay, I would, I mean, that's, I think, going to be an important piece of information, especially if, if they're looking at potentially events of two hundred. And I, as well as what Counselor Bell had just said, I would, I would be more interested in a hundred and fifty and having that be the topic for right now. And also would be interested in that reapproval after one year and really looking at this and seeing how this is going. Definitely concerned about noise levels and traffic and certainly the parking. The other thing that I would, would include on your number thirteen that was added, which I think is good. And I know there was a resident that had concerns regarding Johnny Blues being there and sitting for potentially several days. Not that that would happen, but just would, would like to see not just trash from the outdoor event shall be removed. Now with Johnny Blues, maybe it's not the same day, but, but there's a very quick response to getting those Johnny Blues taken care of. So I would like to support this, but there are still, for me, there's a couple of outstanding things that, that certainly the parking and the, the number of the two hundred, max two hundred, dropping that down. Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I am in favor of supporting it with, with basically most of the conditions that other councillors have, have mentioned. You know, as far as, you know, the neighborhood and things like that, I mean, when I think about other things that surround it, there's basically a strip mall across the street that's commercial. There's, you know, a doctor's office beside it that's commercial. If we go on up Amherst Street, there's basically the Museum of the Shenandoah Valley, which has a lot of events, a lot of large events. So, you know, will this add to what's already taking place in, in quote-unquote that neighborhood and that corridor? I mean, it will. But I don't think it'll do anything that's not already being done. So in that sense, I don't, I don't, it's difficult for me to not support it because of that. You know, are there challenges with the site? Yes, there are. But, you know, as I, as I mentioned in the last meeting, you know, there's no guarantee that just because we allow a certain amount of events that every date's going to get booked, or, you know, it's going to be filled to the, to its maximum capacity each time. I mean, really what I think we're doing is, is giving somebody an opportunity to try. And with these revisions, we can come back and, you know, require, make the required changes based on what quite frankly is, at this point, an experiment. And so I'm willing to give the applicant a chance to try. And then over a certain period of time, you know, we can modify things that quite frankly aren't working. So, you know, with that being said, and in the respective time, I am going to support it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Sullivan. Is there any other comments? I have a couple of comments. If, Mr. Humans, for me, if, if this item had been brought to us on its own as a bed and breakfast, I'm sure that it would have been a slam dunk and without any problems whatsoever. And then later on, adding in the event venue part of it. Or adding the event venue with the bed and breakfast, but on a smaller part of, but it seems like this is too much for a property that size. And I'm finding it very hard to even fathom one hundred to two hundred people on their property. And cars. I think the idea is a good one. I think that it should be, personally, I think it should be phased in. My biggest concern, and I'll go back to a comment that Counselor Beach made, is that I think some of the issues of the residents in that neighborhood need to be addressed. I don't know if there's been some type of virtual meeting to address some of their concerns, but I think that needs to happen. At this time, I can't support it as is. So I don't know if we want to have a motion to table this or to deny it because it is a good project. But I think for right now, there's too many variables. And with that, I would ask for a motion from council.
I would make a motion to table it for the applicant to maybe come back with a different plan if that, if that's something that, that would be of interest.
So are you asking to table this? Or are you denying it?
No, I'm asking, I'm, I'm making a motion to table it.
Okay.
Or, or let me, or let me, let me, let me say this. Would the applicant be willing to address some of the concerns and issues that have been raised and bring it back? If so, then I would table it. But if not, then I would make a motion to deny it.
That is your call. And with that table, you can put in those, that suggestion.
Okay, then that's, that's what I would do is to table it and to work with the applicant to see. to see if they would be interested in coming forward with a revised version based on the comments.
For how long?
30 days.
Is there a second? Point of order. Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, just from memory, it's best to specify the meeting date that you want to come back with, so.
Thank you.
If you table, it is, no definitive date is set for the next time it will come back, it will just be brought back when staff and the revised, if any, plan comes forward. If we continue it, then we need to set a certain date.
Okay, so she can table it and that'll be indefinite, and then it just comes back? Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion for a table?
I'll second the motion to table. Bell?
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Ms. Herb Stritt?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Kiranen?
Yes.
Mr. Milstead?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Beach?
Yes.
And Mayor Smith?
Yes, and that item has been tabled. Thank you. On the agenda is a second reading of RZ-20-379 at Ordinance to rezone 6.23 acres of land at 222 Spring Street. From Highway Commercial District to Highway Commercial District with planned unit development overlay district coverage to proffers. The development plan overlay rezoning calls for 198 multifamily residential units, 31.8 units per acre, and two commercial buildings along the Spring Street frontage. The comprehensive plan identified this as a redevelopment site where PUD is encouraged. Before we go into discussion, we did receive this morning a proffer to extend the fencing on Spring Street as requested by some of... Mr. Humans?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and thank you for pointing out this updated proffer statement. Proffer statements amendments can be received without issue prior to opening the public hearing, so this is not necessarily a change to the development plan, this is instead to bring the latest version of the proffer statement into conformity with the latest development plan, and so the change, if we could stop right there, is in proffer number one, the very end of that proffer now says "and revised January 6, 2021." That's the extent of the changes, and if we go to the next slide, we have the updated development plan. If we could go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, this actually should say revised development plan, January 21, 2021. There's no substantive changes, but it does reflect that additional screening, and if we go to the last slide here, next one. Recall from the work session, the applicant has now extended that screening fence as shown in the red, and be glad to answer any questions council has after the public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received online?
Yes, sir, I did receive one comment from Emmanuel Empress of 7361 McWater Place, Annandale, Virginia. He writes, "At the Winchester Planning Commission meeting held on October 2020, the applicant for rezoning produced a traffic study and a map that had designated the private access Roy Rogers and Tropical Smoothie Building road between South Pleasant Valley Road and Spring Street as an ingress egress for the proposed new development site. This access road is private property and privately maintained primarily by S.L. Winchester LLC, the owner of the property, Tropical Smoothie Building in parentheses, 1531 to 1539 South Pleasant Valley Road, Winchester, Virginia 22601, and no permission has been discussed or considered for the use of this private access road as an ingress egress. This point was also made at October 2020 Planning Commission meeting by me as counsel for S.L. Winchester LLC. S.L. Winchester LLC does not oppose O-2020-56RZ-2379, but does want to understand that the traffic study and map of applicant are incorrect. As to the access road for the aforementioned reasons, it will be acknowledged by applicant and entered into the official record."
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Mr. Elwell, is there anyone who would like to speak at this public hearing?
If you would like to speak on this matter, please unmute your microphone at this time, and I'll call on you individually.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lawson?
One second, who's speaking, please?
Mr. Lawson, go ahead.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is Ty Lawson, and William Park is also on the line, and I think he's trying to speak. We'll be pleased to respond to any questions, but I think Mr. Park wants to speak briefly with you, and after he concludes, I'll be pleased to be available to answer questions, and I would like to speak to Mr. Empress's comments as well. Thank you.
So, Mr. Lawson, are you using your time now? Because... Are you using your time to introduce him?
I think Mr. Park will speak first, and I'll promise to only be a minute or less to respond to the one comment that you received, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Elwell?
William Park with Pinnacle Construction in Bluestone Land, Charlottesville, Virginia. I just wanted to follow up on the comments, and over the last six to seven months, we've been working on this project, and it was vetted thoroughly by the Planning Commission. I know at the last meeting, there was a question regarding the affordable housing and that we're doing in the density bonus, and there was a question about how that would be monitored, and I just wanted to make it clear that this falls within our wheelhouse, so to speak, in that we do a lot of affordable housing around the state. We intend to work with VHDA on the financing of this project. We have forms that we have to fill out annually with VHDA, and we would present this at the end of the year to Mr. Humans or whoever that you all have in the city to confirm the 5% affordable housing that we're doing. And then lastly, as I said, assuming we are approved tonight, we will, we plan to utilize VHDA financing. In doing so, we would need a resolution from the... As this financing, in return, we would then increase our affordable housing pursuant to VHDA's mixed income rules, we would increase our 5% up to 20% affordable in our project. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight, and I'm certainly available to answer any other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patrick, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I believe Mr. Lawson wanted to follow up after Mr. Park.
All right. Mr. Lawson, one minute or less.
There you go, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I did receive Mr. Empress's comments, and it sent me to the land records, and it reminded me of a deed of easement. We actually put the record back in October of 14, which provides for cross easement across the property zone by Mr. Donigan. It actually predates the creation of the separate parcel, the Tropical Smoothie and Pozanos and Pet Store parcel, and it allowed for access back and forth from Spring Street to Pleasant Valley and also going the other way as well. We put it together initially so that the Jiffy Lube would have an improved access point, but also for others, and we do find that this comment came up before, find it a little curious that the owners of the Roy Rogers Tropical Smoothie and Pizza Place would have objections to customers, pedestrians walking back and forth would think that that would be a good thing, and that's why we created that cross easement, and the pedestrian study speaks for itself. Ironically, it actually shows the bulk of the walking trips to go over to the traffic light where Taco Bell is, and then across where the former Quality Inn is and the dorms to then make your way over to the park and to Shenandoah. But I did want you all to be aware of that. Other than that, Tim did a great job presenting, and you do have the updated proffers with the screening that the neighbors asked for. Thank you.
Mr. Lawson? Patrick, is there anyone else?
If there's anybody else that would like to speak on this matter, please unmute your microphone at this time. If you've called in, dial *6 to unmute yourself. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing. Are there any questions? Any discussion?
Counselor Bell?
Counselor Bell?
Yeah, just to point a clarification with Mr. Park's comment, if he does pursue the VHDA financing, you're saying it would require a resolution of the common council that if received, he would increase the percentage to 20% for affordable housing? That's presupposed that he is approved for that financing, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, yes.
So if he's not approved for that financing, then it basically falls back to the approval or the expectation of 5% affordable housing as measured locally?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Herstet?
Thank you, Mayor. So I know that the community's been really engaged in this, in this project, and that you all have had several meetings with them, and I guess two questions. One is, have... I guess, are there any outstanding concerns that you're aware that any of the residents have, is one question, and then secondly, is, and this is maybe more for Tim, but we still need to address the right of way on this, as well as my understanding.
Thank you. Mr. Humans?
Thank you, I'll answer that second question and then offer opportunity for the applicant to answer councillor Herb Stritt's first question. The right of way does need to be resolved, but this rezoning does not hinge upon that land coming into the developer's property, it only makes the development less dense and more green, because it would be more acreage that would be part of the development site. As far as the neighbors' concerns, I think the fact that none of the residents were quite vocal earlier in the process, residents of Greystone Terrace, are not speaking tonight, even though they were notified with adjoining property owner letters, speaks to the issue of resolving issues that they had.
Thank you, Mr. Humans. Mr. Park?
Ms. Herb Stritt, I'm not aware of any other issues with the neighbors.
Thank you. Is there any other comments?
Sullivan, comment?
Counselor Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I've spent a lot of time looking at this, thinking about this, you know, considering how I'm going to vote, whether I should approve it or not approve it, and every single time I continue to come back to, you know, pedestrian safety, and a couple other things that just kind of stick out to me, and that's based on, you know, kind of living here my whole life and watching the area grow and change and evolve and become, you know, what it is today, and, you know, the reality is, is that Pleasant Valley Road is just not a residential corridor. It was not designed that way, it was designed as a commercial corridor of shopping and restaurants and retail and, you know, things of that nature. And, you know, in addition to pedestrian safety, there's the traffic impact, which is going to happen no matter what you build, but when you factor, you know, the density of the development, the number of people that are going to be living there, the number of college students that are going to be living there, who will be trying to cross one of the busiest streets in town. I drove out there today, I went to Sheetz before the meeting, and on purpose, purposely observed the intersection, and you take a day like today where it's dark, it's cloudy, it's rainy, it's icy, the sightlines on Pleasant Valley Road are not good, it's actually not a level grade in certain areas, it tends to have sort of an incline to it. Anyway, point is, is visibility is bad, and the number of people that'll be crossing the street at different points and at different times, quite frankly, it's a very dangerous situation. You know, I appreciate all the work the developer has done and his attorney, and I think that, and I sympathize with the dilemma they're in, because, you know, the world has changed because of COVID, you know, this brick and mortar retail environment is changing every day, we don't know really what the future's going to hold, and so it's a regional zoning and what it's supposed to be, you know, it's, that's evolving, but, you know, as far as what this is and some of the challenges that it presents, I just cannot get behind it in its current form, and, you know, again, I want to thank the applicant and all the work they put in, and thank his attorney for all the work that he's done, it's not easy, but, you know, time and time again, I have to really just vote my conscience on a lot of this stuff, and, you know, this pedestrian safety issue with the college kids crossing the street, going to Sheetz, going to Starbucks, running over to the dorms to hang out with their friends, and vice versa, it's just not a good mix for me, so I don't think I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion?
Councillor Bell?
Councillor Bell, can you hold off for a second to see if someone else has something to say on this?
Sure can.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? I see, councillor Bell, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I too have concerns about not only pedestrian but bicycle mobility if, if the objective of this property or this project is to encourage student housing that would want to easily access Shenandoah University. I think those can be effectively addressed, and to councillor Sullivan's comments, I would imagine that the students, that there's students already crossing Pleasant Valley right now, Sheetz is not the end all be all, there are people going to Tropical Smoothie and Taco Bell and Roy Rogers and Planet Fitness, so they're crossing back and forth across Pleasant Valley right now. There's multiple hotels, whether it's the Hampton Inn or the Wyndham, or some that have now been converted into SU Housing that have high density occupancy and a lot of encouraged pedestrian traffic. So, you know, I think that's incumbent upon this community to address that along these corridors regardless of this project, to make sure that we have it, and we've got pedestrians crossing down at the frontage road, coming from the old Perkins Restaurant, which that area is now student housing. So we have a number of pedestrian crossing areas that are of concern. So we have a number of pedestrian crossing areas that are of concern. While this would certainly add to it, it wouldn't eliminate, or it wouldn't fully address it unless we address it as a community. So I can get, I can get behind this. I think it's where else can you get 198 dwelling units on 4.6 acres? The density is good for what we're trying to accomplish. And I would just like to hear the applicant or staff address the question of pedestrian bike safety. I know it's been pointed out in the studies, but I just want to have an understanding of who will do what and when as it relates to signalization, implementation of crosswalk improvements and signal time.
Mr. Yumus.
Thank you, Mayor. I believe that Mr. Eisenach is on the session here, so perhaps council would want his input. I have discussed this request, and I know he's reviewed the traffic impact analysis, including the bike and pedestrian safety component of that. So I defer to the applicant, but under Mr. Eisenach. I do want to offer one other point of order, just with regards to a possible motion. If council is inclined to approve this or adopt this ordinance, it should make reference to the development plan of January 25th, 2021, and the proffer revision of today, January 26th, 2021. If council is inclined to adopt a motion to deny it, then you are required to state the reasons for the denial as part of that. Thank you.
Before I, since Perry is on the line, then what I'll do is I'll state my opinion, and then I'll let Perry chime in. So I am in favor of this project, and I think it's a very good project. And I was by that area the other day, and you had this huge field that's just development there. The, the traffic is, there's basically traffic there in that area twice a day. In the morning and in the evening, people coming into town and people leaving town. And there are students leaving, going to and from, from to the university and to their homes, the roads. And they're being quite safe about it. And I don't think we've had any iciness with students since then. But a few months ago, it was presented to council through BDOT and Mr. Eisenach to make some improvements on Valley, on Pleasant Valley Avenue to make the area safe, and we denied it. And the money, but it wasn't our money that we were spending. We were spending BDOT's money. And now here we are talking about the lack of safety that could have been addressed. I will support this, and I think that as we move forward, then we need to start addressing some of the safety concerns that keeps coming up about that corridor. Mr. Eisenach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to the pedestrian safety, so we currently have pedestrian signals at all the signalized intersections there. And they're timed so that there is plenty of time for pedestrians to cross the street safely. And I think that's would be, that's the case if, if there's one student, if there's five students together, probably even up to 10 or a few more students together in a group. There's adequate time, the way the lights are timed now, for the pedestrians to safely cross the street. Now, if, if we get to a point where there's larger groups of students than that, that it's going to take longer for the whole group to cross, we can look at making some adjustments to those timings. We have to be very careful in terms of changes that we might make could impact the traffic flow down Pleasant Valley. And, and, and right now, the, I guess, the, the primary objective of the way the traffic is timed out there is during peak hours to, to move traffic up and down Pleasant Valley. But I, I think if, if conditions warrant, we can look at that. We can make adjustments as necessary. But I, you know, when I went to, to college, there was a, a major street that students had to cross pretty similar to this. And I, when I, when I was there, I didn't really see any problems. You know, the, the lights were timed so that it, it worked for everybody. And, and I think that will be the case here as well.
Thank you, Mr. Eisenach. What is the pleasure of the body?
Mayor, Mayor, I have one more question. May I?
Yes.
Yeah. Recognizing that this is expected to be a lot of students living there, is there going to be an onsite person there 24/7?
Yes, I believe they have a, an office that is staffed to let the applicant address the hours.
Yeah, Ms. Herstert, William Park here. We will have a full-time leasing office and management team there. They will not be there 24/7, right in the middle of the night, they will not be there. But as always, we have people on call that should something arise, they can be paged or called very quickly.
Okay, I guess, I guess that, you know, I mean, I, I would like to think that, you know, students are going to all be, you know, doing what they're supposed to be doing, but there's not going to be a, a, a resident, an RA onsite, it sounds like. So, I don't know, that's just, I certainly share concerns that other counselors have regarding traffic and pedestrians and stuff like that. But that's just another, another issue that I think is important to be aware of.
Is there a motion?
McKernan motion to approve.
Second, Clark. I have a motion from Counselor McKernan and a second from Counselor Clark.
I think I was supposed to put in the dates.
Can we put in the dates as stated by Mr. Yumus?
I'd appreciate that.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Bell. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herstert.
No.
Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKernan.
Yes.
Mr. Milstead.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
No.
Mr. Beach.
No.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
What was the, Carrie, can you give me the numbers, please? Was it six to three? And that passes. Thank you. The next item is public comments. Now's the time on our agenda for public comments. We will be offering public comments at each meeting. Mr. Hoffman, were there any comments received on line?
Yes, sir. Okay. I can get through all of these, please, all of these are within three minutes. First one is from Alessa Lucre of Tom Hock Trail in Frederick County, related to item 12 dot three. Comments: I am against this ordinance. I feel it is a violation of my rights as an American citizen and an ineffective solution to the nonexistent problem of gun violence in Winchester City government buildings. I know there are many more people who oppose, and honest, and I honestly feel they haven't had enough chance to speak up and oppose this. Any business in the town of Winchester will lose my support because I will not go where I can't take my firearm, and I can't be the only person out there who feels the same way. Thank you for your time. Next comment is from Elaine Bayless of 122 Morning Glory Drive in Frederick County, related to item 12 dot three. I was made aware of the meeting banning guns. It will not cut down on the illegal use of firearms. It is not the responsibility conceal carry people who are the problem. Banning guns takes away a possible life-saving measure. We pay to take classes to better educate ourself. We practice safety and win it's necessary to use it. I think it would be better to educate the public on proper gun management, train your citizens not to have them in fear, and take people who do the right thing and are not afraid to stand up and protect the people of Winchester. Not to punish the good for a few bad. It's not been an issue. I run EMS and fire. My brother-in-law is a officer in Clark County but lives in Winchester. Better education is key. The punishment for breaking the rules shouldn't infringe on our Second Amendment right to bear arms. You have seen it. School posts. It is just a sign like a protection order is a piece of paper. You call, you call 911 for people to come with guns. I'd love to hear your thoughts. Sincerely, educated, conceal-carrying citizen. Next comment is from Sid, Sidnor Gaiman at 518 Tennyson Avenue. His comment is, and this is a general comment related to no specific item on the agenda. Homes, apartments in the city that are uninhabited and in obvious disrepair. Who is responsible for identifying and pursuing city actions to enforce the minimum standards of the ownership and maintenance of these private properties? I don't believe the relevant city codes are being addressed and enforced. I have experienced code enforcement before when a porch renovation was deemed improper, which resulted in city action and financial penalties for me. I am aware of other residents that encountered the same problem and expense. Disrepair need to have the same attention as well. Maintain properties that undergo architectural scrutiny. I appreciate your response in advance. Thank you. I believe I have one more. And this is for item 12, I believe, well, it's the Linden Drive logic. I'm not sure if it's still 12 dot one on our agenda with the amendment, but here we go. From Melissa Barker, Main Street. Good evening, City Council. I would like to share comments about the rezoning application for the old middle school site along Linden Drive. My biggest concern for this rezoning application continues to be the increased traffic. The application as currently presented would create almost three times more traffic than what current zoning permits. Linden Drive is already very congested when medical offices are open, often making the street too narrow for two cars to pass. Combine that with the only exit onto Amherst, and I think many people will choose to head down Carolyn Street instead or another offshoot. This will further add to traffic on Fox Drive and make for a very congested intersection at Caroline and Fox. Without the connector to the campus boulevard through Winchester Medical Center, our main neighborhood streets will take on more traffic. As was mentioned in the last meeting, the city's comprehensive plan calls for this connector. Please consider making this connector road a requirement for this application. If the connector road cannot be guaranteed, then please consider reducing the number of residential units closer to the current zoning permits. I think these changes can help allow for the needed growth that will benefit the city and also help preserve our neighborhood. Thank you for your time. That's all the comments we received.
Mr. Elwell, whether, is there anyone online who wishes to speak on any item?
For public comments this evening, we'll start with anyone logged on to the WebEx platform wishing to speak, and then we'll hear from anyone who has called into the meeting on their phones. At this time, if you are on the WebEx screen and you wish to speak, please unmute your microphone, and I will call on you when it's your turn. You'll please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to provide comments. Please unmute your microphone at this time. Seeing none. For our call-in user, you're about to hear a prompt to unmute your microphone. If you wish to speak, please follow the prompt, but if not, please ignore it. Seeing none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Oh, I will now close the public comments. Item is the consent agenda. Would any member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? In that case, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Hill and a second from Counselor Herstert. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herstert.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McKernan.
Yes.
Mr. Milstead. Mr. Milstead. Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. So the consent agenda has been approved. The next item is the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the green sheet item. An audit, an ordinance repealing and replacing Article 14 dot one of the zoning ordinance of the city of Winchester, Virginia, by establishing flood plain districts by requiring the issuance of permits for development and by, and by providing factors and conditions for variance of the ordinance. TA dash 20 dash 608, presented by Mr. Eisenach. Good evening again, Mr. Eisenach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me say that I apologize that we're having to bring this back to you at the last minute like this, and I'll try to briefly explain what, what has happened since council just adopted this ordinance two weeks ago. We started this process back last September, and we prepared the ordinance with the changes. We sent it to the state back in September. They reviewed it, gave us back their comments, and everything was good to go. So it went through the Planning Commission, eventually came to you all, and as I said two weeks ago, you approved the ordinance. Well, the day after council approved the ordinance, we sent the final approved ordinance to the state. And they in turn sent it to FEMA. Well, we were notified just today from the state that there is a definition that is missing from the ordinance. And they, you know, they basically said, hey, we're sorry we didn't catch this. Sorry, we didn't tell you, you needed this. But if you don't get this done by Friday of this week, the city of Winchester will be suspended from the flood insurance program. Well, you can probably guess what my reaction was. And, you know, certainly we, we will have further conversations with the state and FEMA about how this could have happened because I think it's clearly their mistake that we're having to clean up. So what we're doing is we're, we're asking council to adopt this ordinance again tonight with this added definition. It's, it's for the start of construction. And it, it really doesn't change anything other than added definition. And they're still, because of the way we're doing this tonight, to, to make sure that we stay in the flood insurance program and we're not suspended for even a day, which could cause problems for our residents. We will need to do some cleanup. We will need to do some cleanup dealing with the planning commission and we're, we're also going to look at where this ordinance is in city code and so it will probably be coming back to city council in some form at a future date. But tonight really our focus is for council to adopt this change so that that we stay within the flood insurance program. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
What is pleasure of the body?
To approve. Second, McCurnan.
Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yeah, yes.
Ms. McCarrenan.
Yes.
Mr. Milstead.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. And so thank you, Perry.
Thank you all very much.
The next item on the agenda is a first reading and ordinance to rezone 22.7 acres of land at 441 Linden Drive. From low density residential district to low density residential district with planned unit development overlay district. The initial development plan for this PUD overlay rezoning calls for between three and 306 dwelling units approximately 13.4 units per acre, including 160 active adult multi-family units on the lower terrace and 143 to 146 townhouse units on the upper terrace. The comprehensive plan identified this area as a redevelopment site where PUD is encouraged. Mr. Yeunis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Very quickly, um, the applicant continues to make improvements. If we could move forward two slides. I just quickly want to point out, um, the change with the alternative accesses. These were previously listed as optional. Oh goodness, and this is the wrong slide, but where it says optional in the lower headings on both of these, that word has now been changed to alternative. And for the one on the left out to the medical center, it is still, um, unlikely that that will get built because the Valley Health opposing it. Um, go back to the slide again where we were, please. Um, on the right, the mini roundabout there at the intersection of Linden and Caroline um, is identified as optional, but Shenandoah University has agreed to do this. So that is part of their proposal. Unless Shenandoah, um, pulls out of that agreement for some reason. Uh, that's the extent of the update.
Okay, and just reminding council, this is a first reading and no action is needed on this. Is there, um, any questions for Tim?
Clark, I have a question.
Councilor Clark.
Mr. Yeunis, do I understand you correctly in saying that the hospital has opposed this interparcial connector to the Medical Center Drive Road?
That is correct.
So basically that's not going to happen.
Unless they can come back to the bargaining table, I'm hopeful that Valley Health will at least agree to the bike pedestrian connection and possibly a gated emergency vehicle only connection. But there's been no progress to my knowledge.
Out of curiosity, is this, is this a dollars and cents issue or is this a traffic issue?
I believe it was a matter of Valley Health not feeling it was part of their future vision.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? There being none, I'll move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr. Yeunis.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution to adopt an amended memorandum of understanding regarding the Timbrook Achievement Center. Elwell, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Um, back in August of 2019, council was presented with a memorandum of understanding with the Youth Development Center and the Timbrook Achievement Center, TAC for short. Um, as part of an application for grant funding to help expand the tax program serving youth as an alternative to juvenile detention. Um, council approved that MOU and we were subsequently awarded nearly $130,000 uh, in grant funds from the Virginia Department of Criminal Justice Services. Um, with the relationship established in the original MOU, the YDC and TAC would pay the upfront expenses for the program. Uh, then request reimbursements from the city and the city would then request reimbursements from the state. Unfortunately, uh, shortly after the grant, uh, cycle began, the pandemic hit and dramatically altered the financial and programmatic situation for the YDC and TAC. Uh, and the program could no longer be carried out as originally intended. Uh, through a collaborative effort between city staff, uh, TAC, city schools and Haven Mental Health uh, and DCJS, uh, we've developed a plan to move forward which, uh, will allow, uh, tax grant, grant funded programs to operate, uh, under these new conditions. Uh, because this dramatically alters the relationship that was established in the original MOU. We're bringing an amended MOU before you tonight and requesting your approval. Uh, under the amended MOU, the upfront personnel expenses will be initially handled by uh, the school system and now Haven Mental Health on tax behalf. Uh, they'll then, uh, submit, uh, their expenses to the city reimbursement on a monthly basis and the city will then submit reimbursement requests to DCJS quarterly. Uh, because the grants timeline has been, um, significantly impacted by the pandemic. DCJS has indicated that they're willing to extend the grant beyond the initial 18 month cycle, um, but we're waiting on more, uh, specific details from them on that. Uh, so if approved tonight, uh, the second component of this will come in a future supplemental appropriation. Um, which will just be to cover expenses accrued between the quarterly reimbursements through the grants fund. Um, in the end, this will have no long-term budgetary impacts as all of the programmatic funding will be reimbursed by DCJS. Um, with that, uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions. We also have Judge uh, Beth Kellis and the TAC Program Coordinator, Maitland Rutledge on the call if you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, are there any questions or discussions? Mr. Mayor. Who's speaking?
Councilman Hill.
Councilor Hill.
Um, I, I don't have any real questions, but I, I would like to make a comment that given the history of the Timber program, uh, the successful history, I would say. I was very pleased that it's at the the outcome or the results of their program. And I'm very much in support of this program. Would like to see it continued. And would do anything to ensure that it does continue. It has helped a number of kids, one or two that I know of personally, uh, that is within my own district. So I'm very much in support of this program.
Thank you. Um, can I ask, um, uh, councillors if you're not yourself? Is there anyone else? Um, Councilor Herstert.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Comment in the question, comment. Um, thank you, um, to Judge Kellis and to all of those that have worked to make this happen and to, um, keep trying to find a way to, to move it forward. I know COVID's impacted organizations, um, and, uh, the ripple out from that certainly has impacted this, but I'm, I'm glad to see that there's, um, a lot of effort to still try and figure out how to make this, this happen. Um, so that, that's exciting and it's a great program. So definitely will support this. Um, but did have a question under the document grant administration number six. Um, it says all personnel employed or contracted for the purposes of grant funded activities must comply with the city's comprehensive employee management system. So will, will the staff as part of this, will they be employees of the city or, and if they're not employees of the city, will they, it, it looks like that they would need to, um, be part of the SIM. So just if, if you could, Patrick, respond to that.
Sure. Um, no, the, the people that will be employed through this program will now be city employees. Uh, we put that in the MOU, but basically to just have a uniform, um, code of conduct, uh, for lack of a better term, for, uh, anybody that is uh, working on a program on basically on behalf of the city because the city is the one uh, responsible for the grant, uh, funding itself.
Okay. So when, when you're, when you're talking about the SIMs, you're, you're, you're talking about the, the conduct and not benefits and things like that.
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Mayor Smith, if I could, Clark.
Councilor Clark.
I, I also just want to echo the praise that was offered to Judge Kellis and the staff of the Timrick Achievement Center. This is very much an example of a pound of, I mean, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Having worked in community mental health with juveniles over the last 20 years, uh, you know, this is exactly what we needed Winchester. And I'm very excited that we're funding this and carrying this mission forward. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, Patrick, just a real quick question. This, uh, my understanding is arose uh, due to COVID, uh, for the need of us to, uh, take the lead on the financial end. Since we all hope COVID will have a, uh, a, uh, end. Is there going to be a sunset in this that it reverts back the way it is now? There's a plan for us to take over permanently?
Um, the plan right now is just to continue on this path until the grant is expended. Um, it's not a perpetual grant, so the original grant cycle was 18 months. Uh, all of the grant funds had to be expended in 18 months, but, um, we're not exactly sure what, um, DCJS has in mind, uh, when they indicate that they would like to extend it. Um, that would not, under my understanding, would not be extending the grant, um, in terms of the money, but the timeframe in which that money needs to be spent. So once the grant funding is, um, expended, then the MOU will be unnecessary.
Great. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Beach.
Second.
Clark, if you will.
Carrie, would you please call?
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstrick.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McCarrenan.
Yes.
Mr. Milstead.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes.
And that is forwarded to you. Thank you, Patrick. The next item on the agenda is also a first reading and ordinance to amend Chapter 16 of the Winchester City Code, adding Section 16 dash 34 pertaining to possessing, carrying or transporting firearms in certain public places presented by Mr. Hoffman, the city manager.
Mayor, council, no changes since work session. Uh, we had looked at, uh, some of the comments made by, uh, councillors. And afforded a memo to council regarding some of the security issues. Uh, as far as the language of the ordinance itself, we didn't make any changes because this, uh, language was pulled directly from state law, uh, and we're hesitant to make any changes. Um, it's also been adopted in other jurisdictions. Uh, so we were hesitant to deviate from it, but if there are deviations that the council would like to consider, uh, Ms. Michelson, I would defer to Ms. Michelson to weigh in on whether or not they will go awry of, uh, what we're authorized to do by the state. Uh, and other than that, I can take any questions.
Uh, are there any questions for Mr. Hoffman? There being none, I'll move on to the next item.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Bell.
Yes, Councilor Bell.
I just, I had a question. I think I had sent this in the form of an email previously, but I wasn't sure. In the language that talks about, um, prohibition in, um, public rights away, uh, the city public park in certain public rights away in connection with permitted events. And knowing that there's this, this specific requirement for posting. How, how would that be done? What would the logistics of that be? Um, if we were having to post and unpost for, um, for permitted events where this would be necessary? I can understand facilities, uh, fixed facilities. We can just identify the signage requirement and meet that. But for something a little more amorphous as a public right of way.
So we would, um, i- in applying this in order to enforce it, uh, we would have to post signage similar to any other kind of temporary signage. So let's say, uh, uh, a, a local church or synagogue who, uh, closed down a street to have a festival. And this was going to be applied, uh, we would post temporary signage similar to what we do with no parking signage, uh, just to make sure that there's sufficient posted notice.
Thank you. Since this is a first reading, no action is needed on this. Moving on. A resolution, the next item was a resolution to adopt the city of Winchester 2021 state legislative priorities. Mr. Hoffman.
Mayor and council. So this is, uh, adopted by the council every year. Uh, this is my, my first one with the city of Winchester. So, uh, my apologies for, for not being completely familiar with the pro. Legislatures already in session. Uh, this is a, a format that you're familiar with. Staff helped compile from various, um, department directors, members of staff, other stakeholders, uh, constitutional officers. Uh, and this is the, the collection of that. It's on for, it's on here instead of a work session because, uh, for, in part because it, it will expedite things. If this is acceptable to council, it will allow us to get it the, the legislature and our delegation. If it was a work session, you really couldn't take any action. So if it need, if it still needs some work and you want us to continue to, uh, make some changes or some additions, obviously we can just bring it back to the next regular meeting. But we want to go ahead and put it on the regular meeting agenda. So if it was acceptable to the body, uh, we could go ahead and transmit as soon as possible.
If I may make a comment, in years past, pre, pre-COVID, um, the city manager normally sent out an email with some of our, um, legislative agendas. And we would meet with the delegate or representative either in Richmond or have a breakfast here in, um, in Winchester. But since that's impossible and they are in session, um, this is the only way that we can send down our agenda. Some of the items that were on the agenda, they are from years past and we keep pushing these things to see if at some point they will get pushed forward or moved forward. And, um, and that's all I have. Are, are there any comments?
Sullivan.
Councilor Sullivan, yes.
Yeah, um, so that was a good summary and I largely agree with that, Mayor. Uh, one of the things that year in and year out, as long as I've been here, that we, um, consistently um, advocate for is unfunded mandates. And, um, I'm not saying we have to stop the train and put that on there, but it, it maybe we should consider it in some form, um, either in this document or, um, some other correspondence to our, to our local, um, delegates and legislators and legislators. And the other thing that might be timely, although it might not apply here, um, it might not fall into the category of a, um, legislative priority, but, um, that, that's vaccine rollout in the way that it's being handled by the state of Virginia. And, um, I don't want to deep dive on that, but I'll just kind of leave it at that and, uh, let my colleagues consider, um, kind of what's going on in Virginia and how it's being handled compared to other states. And if we want to reference that here, we should do it now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Sullivan.
Uh, one quick point, uh, so unfunded mandates are called out on page four. Uh, it's, and we've had a specific conversation with, uh, our new delegate. It's, and we've had a specific conversation with our new delegate Wiley about those, those are very much on his radar as well, so keeping a watchful eye for those types of things. As for vaccine, that's definitely something we can take up at a future date. It's definitely something we're tracking and keeping, getting regular updates on from the Health District.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of the body?
To approve.
Second.
Carrie, would you please call the row? There was Counselor Herbstreit making the motion.
Mr. Bell.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Herbstreit.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McCarrenan. Milstead.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
And Mayor Smith.
Yes. I'll now entertain a motion to adjourn.
McCarronan.
Move, Sullivan. Second, Sullivan.
I have a motion from Counselor McCarrenan and a second from Counselor Sullivan. Carrie, would you please call the row?
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
That's a late yes from Ms. Counselor Bell.
Thank you. Ms. Herbstreit.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. McCarrenan.
Yes.
Mr. Milstead.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Beach.
Yes.
We are now adjourned, and we will reconvene and work sessions here in a few moments. Thank you.